Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Number one.
Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we will move into the first phase of public comments. See. Not many people in the room besides. Boys, make sure you know that people online, it's opened up. Okay, we'll give it a few seconds and I guess if you see a hand raised, I guess I'll ask anybody in the room. Is there anybody in the room that's gonna make a public comment? No. And it doesn't seem like there's anyone online. That being the case, we'll move on to Maddie and the student representative report. It's all yours, Maddie.
Thank you. I didn't, I feel like the last school board meeting was just last week, but I haven't like observed any like crazy changes or anything. Besides the cool new sign in front of the Pratt, I did see that put up this morning. But like students haven't come up to me with any concerns or positives. People do come to me with positives and tell me, talk about them at the school board meeting. So, yeah, there hasn't been anything big happening, but if you have questions, I'm open to answer them.
What about the parking situation? I mean, you brought that up like in one of your first meetings. What is, what is that like these days?
It definitely, it was, it was tricky to get where we are now, but Mr. Dustin did have a meeting with juniors and seniors. Some like anybody who drives to school and I did notice that the parking situation has been a little bit better. I don't, I think just the rest of people that are parking are, do have parking passes and we just, we have a lot of students that have parking passes that are parking in the parking lot. But I haven't had any problems of recently and I haven't had anybody tell me that there's been a bigger problem than there has been. And nobody's really mentioned.
What was, what was the focus of the meeting with, with Mr. Dustin? Was it just reinforcing the fact that you need a parking permit in order to park there?
And to be safe in the parking lot, yeah.
Oh, safety in the parking lot, like as far as speeds and things like that, that's important too. Noticed some of that myself. I do appreciate the fact that kids are eager to leave school. Excellent. Any questions for Maddie? Alright.
Maddie, I have a question. I think I've asked you this question before, but I mean, do you hear grumblings about the new financial aid form? Um, or do you, does it resonate at all with the seniors if they talked about it or?
A little bit. I think there's just like frustration that we haven't heard back yet and more about. Cause obviously the change was rough and them releasing it late was a difficult thing, but I think almost everybody that I know that's coming to go to college has submitted their FAFSA and I think it's just like frustrations because a lot of people are waiting to commit to college until they hear how much financial aid is because college is really expensive. But that's the only frustrations I'm hearing now.
I've heard a little bit of grumbling about the, now that it's becoming a graduation requirement.
Yes.
College, no college, no matter what, every student has to do this. I've heard some grumbling about that, but I think that's out of our, out of our hands. It's not a diff, I just wonder, it's also not a difficult form to fill out.
Yeah.
But a lot of people are complaining that not hearing back and we've even called some colleges to say, what's the deal now? Well, we haven't gotten anything.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's really just on their end that they haven't, that we haven't heard anything.
Any other questions or student representatives?
No, but thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you, Maddie. We always appreciate it.
Entire meeting. Thank you.
So up next is the superintendent's report. I'll hand it over to you, Ruben.
That joke that I just told about Maddie staying for the entire meeting was because she indicated that she did not have to come to school tomorrow due to her need to take some assessments. But you do not have to stay for the entire, but it is a riveting agenda, so.
We talked about it before.
Yeah. So I, you have a written superintendent's report. Let me see if I can click on that. Allow me to. Right here if you want. It's just not pulling up right now, but that's, it's okay. People at home can go and click on that and all work on things here to ensure that I'm able to click on it. But basically there were some topics there about the CTE architectural work that we continue to work with our architect on. Basically in the beginning of January, we submitted an application for proposed CTE, which is career technical education, building structures here at the Koin Middle High School. The areas of that we wanted to kind of focus on with cosmetology, culinary arts, school, public safety, originally fire science was with that as well and also the construction trades, cause we have this construction trades program already, but also, you know, improving upon that. And so our conversations over the last month, month and a half with the, with the Department of Ed is that they are, they gave us some feedback on our application. We needed to put some more details into our job descriptions. We needed to make sure that our furnitures and fixtures, that that was the, as accurate as a list as possible for the various programs. They wanted to see some different architectural work that I'll show you in just a little bit. So that they could kind of visualize what the layout of these spaces might look like. Not just where they're going to be and conceptually how they would be. And then also they wanted us to focus a little bit more on careers or education after high school. So we, you know, where can we be sending our learners to to get other credits or certifications after they leave our programming here in our construction trades or culinary arts. Does Keene State College take the credits? The, this national, the National Community College take credit, et cetera. So we have to provide and do all that research and find that our information into our application. So at the end of this week, we will be resubmitting some of that work to the Department of Ed, maybe feedback to ConVal ourselves as well as Masenic. As some things we need to do. One of these, let's see if I have it here.
I just emailed you about it.
Okay, thank you. So this is a picture, an up to the picture of the overall floor plan. Originally, I think we were going to have the construction trades in the front here and the public safety and security in the back, and then that was going to be with fire science. The state has indicated, or the individuals from the state has indicated that they want us to continue to pursue everything that we are pursuing. Has not yet gone to the commissioner, that would be the next step, but that they would not be approving fire science. As, we can still do the EMT, but fire science, they have reasons why they didn't want to have put that forward. It had to do with numbers of individuals across the state who get into that program. Their data that they say they have regarding the students' ability to pass certain types of physical assessments, being the size that they are, the age that they are perhaps. And also the number of towns that actually have full-time firefighting services. And so that is something that they have indicated that they would not pass along as a, to the commissioner as a recommendation. So we've adjusted some things. We originally had some renovation going on and said some of our upstairs wings, that's been taken out, everything here now it's, it would be new construction. Now, the spaces. You can see this would be a picture of the construction trades where you'd have this outside area in that yellow would be partly covered. There'll be a partial roof over there so that they can do some work outside, store some things, but also have some open to the elements space. This space right here, I believe, yep, is the cosmetology. And so where some of these bubbles are and everything, we're looking to add some, some, you know, some fixtures and so forth and then we go into this area, which was the culinary arts, the main culinary arts area. And what that would look like, and it would share some space or some fixtures with the public safety storage and labs and so forth as well. If we go back to the original one right here, that, what you would see is that there's this courtyard over here as well. And so we're in the conversations about because some of the furniture and fixtures are, is outside like barbecue types, structures for catering purposes, that maybe we might consider doing some sort of outdoor kitchen right outside of the culinary arts area. And that certainly we would want to have some patio space and some mobile seating. You know, things that you could pick up and remove and during the winter months and so forth, or, or be able to rearrange. But also we could have functions there as well as having students access that during the day. So that's one of the items that we've been working on. We've talked at length about grants that we've been doing with early childhood, so we'll discuss that. However, at the elementary level, we will discuss that a couple of things popping up next Monday. At our last board meeting, we talked about what's happening at, for the eclipse and we weren't completely settled on the elementary. We knew that there was something happening at the middle high school. There's an event that's going to be down at the track area. That is being had after school hours, because school gets out here around two fifteen. That being said, the elementary school are still in session when all of this is going on. And so in the conversations with the principals and with with the association and so forth, we were able to work out a situation where we would extend the school day on the eighth for elementary learners till three forty. Parents still have the opportunity, the option to sign in to pick up patrol and say that they're going to pick their kids up at a normal time if they want to. But the bus, the company is all, also ready to come around three forty-five to pick up the learners and bring them back. So that they are able to experience the eclipse with the entire school community. We have the glasses, we'll be going out there. We have enough adults to be able to be there to make sure this is a worthwhile experience. We have both a teacher up here, Susan Rolf is going to redo some elementary education along with some other elementary teachers. So they're going to be working together to help people, to the kids learn about the eclipse and that's going to be neat. And then the last thing I think I will mention that's not, and it's not on that document is that on April third, there is a public hearing in Concord and public hearings on the minimum standards. You may have heard a lot about the S three oh sixes. If you are receiving the emails from the New Hampshire School Board Association, they provide you with the updated revised, proposed S three oh sixes, which is the minimum standards. There are a lot of concerns about the work that has been done on these. There, I know that from the superintendent's standpoint, we are very concerned about equity. We mean decreased opportunities for students, language changes that would increase inequities between school districts, inequities that already exist within the state of New Hampshire due to funding and the overload on the local taxation that has takes place. There's, you know, language, for instance, around removing class size requirements, K through twelve. You know, that you know, the end of the school systems that are going to be able to afford to have specific class sizes versus those who are going to say, hey, you might be able to have, get away with thirty kids in a classroom, thirty-five kids in a classroom and so forth. That's going to change how things are done, if that were put into place, so lower standards for schools, students and teachers. Again, economic, it comes down to economy. It, there will be a likelihood, depending on the language that is put into these minimum standards. A higher, there could be a higher impact to communities that already are impacted quite heavily financially. And so it's important to stay abreast of that. There are some, I would say, concerns about, in, in two thousand and eleven, the state of New Hampshire made, put it into the rules that we were to be competency based, which our school has continued to move toward and we're in fine shape that way. And certainly it helps to be proficiency based in order to be competency based. But you can also use competency and, and not have high expectations. An example of this is that last year, the State Board of Education, I would say, made a very poor choice in allowing PragerU to be utilized for an economics course, basically to fulfill an economics requirement in the high school. If you were to go onto PragerU and look at those resources and the assessments that they provide, you would find an extremely low rigor, very surface type of approach to instruction. Assessments that are multiple choice at a, at a junior sophomore, senior level, something that probably a fourth grader would watch and, and, and do, and you're, you're getting credit for that sort of thing for high school. And it can, it concerns me about how we define competency, because there does need to be a language that talks about the depth at which someone is learning something and not just being able to perform some low level skill. So again, that's April third. I believe it starts at one o'clock. I think it's scheduled from one to four, or one to four thirty over in Concord. And you can find more information certainly online about that and the school board would have already been notified through NHSBA. Last thing that I will say in my report is that, again, you, the, the school board was had an article in the Sentinel over the weekend about its award. I believe it will be in the ledger of tomorrow's paper. And part of that is the work that was done over years of making certain that we could take this school and get it to where it is right now. The signs are just an added piece to it all, but it's about years of working to get the middle and the high school to come together so that there's a unification and that there's an inclusive feel all the way through and more opportunities for our learners. And so another step in that is accreditation all the way through the entire school. So we have never been accredited before at the middle school level. Next week, NIASK is coming to the middle high school and will be here on the eighth, ninth, tenth. I don't think they're going to be here the eleventh, but maybe they are. But anyway, those first three days or so to do their assessment of our entire school. And I know that our teachers here at the middle high school have been doing an incredible amount of work to make sure that their curriculum documents are aligned, that their pacing is aligned, that they're, just all the work that, that they were asked to do a couple of years ago to continue to improve upon where we are at. They've been, they've been doing that work and I think that it is going to be a wonderful celebration of where we have come to and also an understanding of that we are on a journey of continuous improvement and that we're not stopping here, but it's a great next step in the work that we're doing. Thank you.
Any questions for Ruben? Go ahead, John.
Ruben, thanks for the, the update, just on the eclipse planning, as they've been in coordination with the library or other organizations in town and also along that. How are the, the timings for the middle school, high school students getting to two fifteen? Is that, is that, I think that's maybe just prior to when the eclipse starts, that?
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, it's, it's about, I think, fifteen to twenty minutes prior to the start of it all. And certainly not at the focal point there for those two or three minutes. And so there's some time for people to, to leave, to get home, but also to make their way down to the field if that's what they're planning this to do.
Will there be glasses for the students?
Yep, we have ordered enough glasses for all of our students and adults in the school district. As for the town library and, and their involvement, I think the library also has glasses and maybe expect to have some people coming their way. We've notified them of our intentions. We're pleased about that. I have that confirmation in email. That the recent, the messaging that was sent out this afternoon through Ranger Memorial, the things that are for grades will just more than town. Letting parents know of the, of the eclipse and the plans for the elementary schools, the library was based. The library, of course, was concerned that they would have more kids coming over, because they do on a regular basis have a lot of kids from the elementary coming over to their aunt and brother. And they didn't know they've been held up glasses or supervision for the event. So that has been taken care of. And the bus company was helping.
Thank you. Just one, one other question, just, so, thank you for the update about the S three oh six review and copy, I want to say. You, you mentioned that some of the concerns the superintendent's had are to minimum standing for classroom sizes and the competency education. Think you said we moved towards that two thousand and eleven?
That was when the conversation started, yes. In New Hampshire and that it was put into place that, yes, that we should be moving toward a competency approach.
And so how is competency different than the traditional approach assessment?
It's moving away, the, the easiest way to say is that you know, we went to school during a time when seat time was important. You need to be timed in the seat, you need to be present, you need to be, you know, doing a certain type of, you know, this percentage of, of homework, this percentage of this, 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 to get a grade, competency is, show me the evidence of your line. And now you do need to have criteria for what needs to be learned, how deeply it needs to be learned. And then also you need to have assessments in order to build or design or at least the capacity for students to design their own assessments to show that they have been able to master, mastery is sometimes a word that is used, but loosely, but to grasp and master the concepts and, and be able to show that they understand that at a specific level. Typically to the level of what we call transfer. That's the idea of being able to learn something in a situation and be able to take that same learning and apply it to another situation that maybe you haven't been exposed to as much before. So you're able to learn, to do, you know, decimals and percents with money in a specific area of like a word problem, but you're able to go to the grocery store and do the exact same thing in real life. That's, that shows you a, a level of competency in that. Transfer, you transfer it over to another area.
Any other questions for Ruben? I just, it's not, I just wanted to kind of jump on to the CTE update. I've attended some of the meetings. Not really so much of a question, it's just to give a little bit more detail for the board out loud what I can share. I've been impressed with how it's been progressing and the cooperation seems like between the school and, you know, the contractors involved. Kind of what I'd like the board to understand is like the scope of this, this is a big project, right? We're talking about, and I'm, I'm not going to use the exact numbers, but you know, like a twenty-five million dollar project is what we're talking about here, you know? Give or take, right? That's going to, that's going to change, but you know, when you're talking, this isn't a two million dollar project. This is a hundred million dollar project. This is a twenty-five-ish million dollar project that we have on the table right now. Of course, we're proposed the, the kind of once in a generation or lifetime opportunity is that there's possibility that the state's going to fund up to seventy-five percent of that, that still will leave, you know, significant, yeah, significant portion, right, that we'll need to figure out. Just something we should be thinking about. I think that's, it's a great opportunity. It's also a great challenge, right? I think I think we need to be thinking about certainly all the positives that this is going to have potentially for the community and how to, you know, we'll be very involved this year and I think the communication process with the community in order to figure out how to, to make this a reality. I know kind of the next steps where we're at is with, I believe, the Commissioner of Education. Ruben spoke a little bit about that. Being sure that it, he recommends it and then it's going to, going to go to the legislature, so. Overall, I just want to say that out loud, because I think there's a role that we can play, right? This is essentially going to be approved in Concord and by our citizens, right? There's two steps there and I'd like us to be thinking about how, how we can make that happen and if that's one of our priorities for the year, just to understand kind of the, what we're going to be asking of our taxpayers potentially next, as early as next year.
Can I ask you a question about that? First of all, thank you for that update. I have not been able to attend those meetings for various reasons and so it's amazing to predict such a big project and we've got a similar sized project starting this coming year in downtown Jeffrey regarding the change in the roadways. Also about a twenty-five million dollar project, whatever you can say about it. One of the meetings, one of the CTE meetings, there was talk from members of the private sector about how that Jeffrey portion of it might be covered, maybe through some kind of a public-private partnership or some, you know, some portion of it that is. So that it wouldn't all go on. Has there been any discussion of that kind of thing that's come up?
No, I think in the meetings that we've, at least I've been able to attend all the meetings, portions of some, right? We've mainly been focusing on the design and, you know, the next steps with the state, I think. That funding piece of it is, these are discussions that we should be having and, you know, over the course of the year, so that this, assuming that this does get approved, it would be on next year's ballot. Right? And we need to have an approach to fund it. Any other questions for Ruben? In that case, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Have a motion here.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you, Christine. Thank you, John. All those in favor? Oh, any discussion? Still getting the hang of this. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. If not, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero to zero. Next, we move on to meeting minutes. Looks like we have one, two, three sets of meeting minutes. Yes, we're looking for a motion here. I don't know if there's.
Yeah, your calendar.
Right, I don't, so. What I, what would I do?
Do it one at a time? I could, I could just go through them one at a time. I guess that I was asking, I prove it all at once, but it's just as easily. If somebody could make a motion, just on the, the first one, the second one, and then the third one.
I move, we accept the minutes for the March eighteenth public hearing as written.
Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Sandy.
Seven.
Thank you, Charlie.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, please do.
Public hearing on eighteenth, that was. Just making sure I was there, that's all I'm asking.
That was to accept the early. I'm gonna say it wrong, but the early. Childhood grant.
Oh, right, 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 okay.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I knew I had missed something, but it's the twenty sixth that I'd missed, okay.
Okay, all those in favor of proving uh the meeting minutes from the March eighteenth twenty twenty four public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? It's approved seven, zero, zero. Can I get a motion on the March eighteenth twenty twenty four meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the March eighteenth twenty twenty four meeting.
Thank you, Lisa.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kim. Any discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor of proving the March eighteenth twenty twenty four meeting minutes? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions, that passes, vote of seven to zero to zero. And can we get a motion on the last? Meeting minutes for March twenty sixth, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the March twenty sixth twenty twenty four meeting minutes.
Thank you, Christine.
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the March twenty sixth twenty twenty four meeting minutes, please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
We have just one abstention.
Him and Lisa.
Oh, two abstentions. So that passes by about a five to zero to two. That concludes the meeting minute section. Next, we move on to action items. So I know, Ruben, you had sent out a video uh earlier in the week. Hopefully, we've all taken the time to watch that, but would you like to share a little bit more of what you wanted to share at the meeting here?
Sure, the video that uh I sent out, which is background knowledge, is certainly a lot longer than this. This is uh. Much shorter. Um, but hopefully, the purpose was to hopefully provide you with some language uh to understand some of the need. A better understanding of the. Terminologies and the concepts that we're talking about here. So basically, when we, we, and we talked about this earlier, we had a a meeting to. Say, hey, we want to around the budget time, we talked actually extensively about literacy and the importance of moving forward with this. And we've come to a very important. Kind of part of our journey, and that is. There's a recommendation for choosing a K through eight literacy. Uh, curriculum or set of materials and approach uh going forward. The lens that we look through is not just. Through the science of reading, we talked about that a little bit. Um, there are several lenses, because anything that we do, we need to make certain the lines with our. Our strategic planning that we've done, it it needs to align with our capacity for continuing to grow, for improving. Ourselves and not just in the area of literacy, but all other curricular areas as well. Um, and so that is how we've approached this one. So the actual recommendation is one that is um. I have to, I have to commend the individuals who work on this. It it is not an easy. Route to take. The decision that um the committee came up with as to how to move forward. But it is likely to be. A very rewarding experience for all involved. Uh, when we look at. The of literacy, just as just for the sake of um seeing where we have been at, New Hampshire. SAS, that's the state SAS in um in proficiency in our grade levels uh from two thousand twenty one to twenty three. Uh, this is just after the pandemic years and. Um, we were a little bit higher than that prior to the pandemic, but we're kind of in that zone right now. And um. We want to do better. And we can do better. And part of the. Situation at hand is that we have a lot of individuals doing some really great work. We have a lot of really great teaching going on. Um, but consistency from one classroom to another classroom and from grade level to grade level. Um, has is not strong in in that respect across the K eight spectrum. Um. There's a lot of great work happening already, and especially in younger grades when it comes to phonics. So we were already doing a lot of the phonics, the phonemic awareness, we were using. Uh, some really wonderful strategies, materials. Uh, we need to do a better job making sure that everyone's trained. And that good work that um more of our teachers who have been here for a longer period of time have been trained in. And so this is a nice reset for us moving forward. When we think about anything that we do, we want to make sure that we are going to be. Adopting something that is going to help us communicate better or help our learners communicate in a stronger way, in this case with literacy. And that we do so both in a collaborative way, but also in a way that's going to enhance collaboration. And that builds community. In order, when we do that, that helps us with inspiration. We get a better inclusive system, and we, when you have a really a culture of collaboration and community, you get a culture of innovation. Doesn't hap- innovation doesn't happen without that other type of co-culture happening first. This is just a picture of describing a lot of the work that we're doing, pre-K through twelve curriculum. There's a lot of work that needs to happen a lot. Um, either is involved directly into it or is intersecting with it and. And so um literacy is certainly a big area of that, and literacy, if we're going to be honest, really intersects itself with all of the other curricular areas. And we wanted to make certain that as we make these decisions, that arrow to the right is that arrow that shows an aligned system. We want to make sure that K through or pre-K through eighth grade, that we are aligning our approaches and our outcomes, our expectations. Um. So that our kids have what they need to be successful and that there isn't. There isn't a lack of kind of uh continuity all the way through the system, continuity, not just in content. Um, not just in approach, but continuity in expectations. And the program that we're going to be talking about here. Is um one of high expectations. We also want to make certain that here's our program consideration that we want to make certain that it helps. Or fits into our collective leadership approach, that we're providing our teachers. The ability to have a lot of voice in how we proceed. And to be able to describe what it means they need in order to reach the goals that they have and that that they have for their learns. And so that they can have the administration or the S A U say, hey, these are the resources we need, please get those to us. Resources can be in the way of um collaboration time, it can be obviously the of resources like actual materials. Um, it can also be uh in. Professional development, those are, those are us providing resources for, and and a big piece of this next steps, of course, is going to be. Uh. Putting in the place, the plan as to how to move forward and what. Teachers need in order to be successful and in order to make sure that they feel like they're going to be successful. The second thing that we looked at is something that you've seen once before, at least during our budget season, which is Scarborough's reading rope. Um, just a picture showing the complexity of reading, that it's not just, hey, here's a book, let's go and let's spend some time reading out loud or reading together. There has to be intentionality in what we do. That reading is not natural. For the um overwhelming majority of us, and that it is not something our brain naturally just goes for doing. Um, it's very complex and it has, it's it's um. And our teachers both need the training in understanding how best to meet all these areas, but they also need the proper materials in order to make. The process more doable. And easier and interesting for kids. So if we were to look at within that reading rope, we're we're saying that approximately right now fifty percent of our learners read proficiently. Um, we're asking questions, how do we make sure that our core, which is that green piece right down there? Um, the general core instruction, how can we make sure that all learners are receiving the core instruction that they need? And so that the results are that if they are doing that, eighty percent of our learners are going to be proficiently, you know, with. Over a period of time, once you've implemented something over a period of years, two or three years. Um, you should see those proficiency levels grow, sir, just because we have a solid core of instruction. And then, of course, making sure that we have research-based tiered interventions as well. And the professional development went along with that to make sure that we are helping those struggling parts. Another piece of this is just the E L A shifts that have been. Um, there for quite some time, actually, with the Common Core, we don't call it the Common Core in St. Anthony, Hampshire, we call it the. Career uh readiness standards or the college and career standards. And those three shifts as it pertains to English Language Arts is that we've got to have regular practice with complex texts, so this. That we're going to show you here tonight has very high complex text ratings. Um, reading, writing, and speaking grounded in evidence from text, we need our learners to be able to cite evidence as to why they think a certain way. And so thinking and writing in particular is stripped out this particular um curriculum. And building knowledge, this one that we're putting forward is actually called a knowledge curriculum. The knowledge-based programs. Uh, that are out there, at least the more more popular ones that are um are right there, the six. Uh, we took a good look at Core Knowledge Amplify, which. There are some schools in New Hampshire who have adopted that, I think Manchester as well as. Oh, a school on the coast, Kingston, um Sandborn Regional High School has recently adopted that, I'm sure maybe some others have as well. That was not a choice of ours, the elementary school in particular schools. Felt it was not an appropriate tool for them, and actually the ratings show that the text complexity is less at the elementary level for that particular program. Than some of the others. Um, the middle school liked it, the subject matter was really good, text complexity high. But we wanted something that was going to really fit all of our learns. And so we got down to uh wit and wisdom, and wit and wisdom is different than the rest of them. Where a lot of these programs and certainly a basal, which is what we've had in the past, uh, we did look at one of those as well, um. But those types of programs and a ba- like like a basal does it all in one type of system, so all of your phonics, everything is in that. Uh, we wanted to build upon our strengths, we already were using foundations, foundations is actually. Foundations integrity are um for younger learners or phonemic awareness and phonics. Those are actually um used as examples within the state's letters training that are a lot of our staff are going through as well, having to do with the science of reading. We didn't want to throw away something we knew was good, and so a lot of the schools that are adopting wit and wisdom um are doing so. By and large, because of the. Fact that they are saying, listen, there is research-based programs, great materials that are already out there, why would we try to tamper with that? We need those to supplement what we're going to do, we're going to do what we're going to do well. We're going to have high text complexity, interesting text, we're going to weave art and music and um different forms of. Uh, media into our programming in order to really help our students not only understand how to read, but also think in a in a very different way. And to be able to cite their evidence and to be able to see things from different perspectives. Um, but their fundamental. Lower part of Scarborough's rope that we have back here. That's going to be done by um the professionals who have already built this program. And so we're excited about moving forward, and that's really one of the only curriculums that even allows for that to happen. The rest of them say, you gotta take our whole thing to get and just do it. The next part is teaching is is not just about, you know, uh, some materials and not just about a set of expectations. Um, it's not just about teachers getting together and collaborating, that that's that's all a part of. It is also about high leverage practices, so there are some practices that are going to produce. Better outcomes than others in in education. And so we wanted to have a program that actually within its teacher resources says. Please use this best practice, please use this best practice, doesn't mean you have to, but they're giving, they're pointing you toward that. But also, because it is not. Going to be using implementation by any stretch of the imagination, she was going to take professional development, we're going to have to make sure that. Uh, we have a a lot of people involved in the development of. The implementation, uh, which is not just a year implementation, which has been done in the past, we've got a history here of doing, hey, we're going to implement it in a year and then we're done, right? And implementation is a minimum of three years, and so. Um, to to really have a grasp of this type of material and to be able to utilize it, certainly implementation, we want this to take place for the next seven, eight. To ten years. Um, if we were to look at the research that John Hattie puts out, uh, he's continuously looking at his meta-analyses of. Research that's already been put into place. Um, phonological awareness has a high effect size, meaning it's really important. Vocabulary programs, really important, phonics instruction, very important, reading comprehension programs, uh, important. That's all embedded into these knowledge-based curriculums and and is tied with the science of reading. The. Um. High leverage areas, when we, when we think about, you know, expectations is important, that's really what the first two of those are, collective efficacy. So when we talk about collective leadership, collective leadership happens, plan and collective efficacy exists, what that means is people. Working together believe that they can accomplish really hard things. And then when they accomplish those things, they feel better about themselves and believe that they can do more. And so the more that builds, the better i- it translates across all areas into other subject areas as well. These are just some practices like jigsaw methods and flip classrooms and providing timely feedback and so forth, so continuous. Conversation back and forth are important to do whenever teaching anything. And then the recommendation from committee is wit and wisdom. Uh, in my superintendent's report, I didn't talk about it because I know I was going to talk about it here, but. Um, you could read that we just sent a team over to um Pennaker, it was a really great visit, I. Uh, I'm going to write a letter of thanks to them specifically because of the work their assistant principal did over there and their. Um, administrative team and their teachers, they were all so inviting, we went into our team, I don't know, I went into. Probably six different classes and observed, you could see the consistency, you could see the language happen, you could see the kids. Dialogueging and writing and thinking, and it was, it was really great, and they're in their first year of implementation, so it's, you know. It's not. All. Uh. You know, wonderful all the time, and they would admit that, but they were honest with us, and they were saying, here's some things that we would do differently if we, you know, if we could have. Known what we know now back then, and so I say that because uh. They were really helpful in helping us make our decision and and going forward with this recommendation, but also. There are some other schools that have started to go this avenue, and we can create a nice network of people to support us through. The next several years, both maybe even shared professional development, I know Fairmont even probably has over to do some professional development in August already. Because they are in their first year of implementation this year, about twenty schools in Massachusetts have already been well into their implementation of this. Um. So. The, and I thi- I think there are probably are some other uh New Hampshire schools that will go this direction. And so uh our next steps really is to continue site visits, we want as many people to be able to get. You know, a greater level of exposure to this, uh, form a structured literacy committee, it doesn't have to be named that, but basically structured literacy is. Um. Is. Is a an approach to teaching reading that is different than maybe the approach that has is the most popular approach out there right now, which is uh. More has a more whole language base to it, which is called um. I I lost it, so I follow this. Um, but but structured literacy is the approach that we would want to, you know, move toward, which is going to take some work. Um, lots of professional development. Building tools that are going to be helpful to teachers to be able to ensure that they feel like they. Have everything that they need in order to do their very best. Um, and so from the board's. Role here is that the K through eight, this literacy committee, um, which had about seventeen people total on it. Uh, represented from kindergarten all the way through grade eight. That their recommendation is to move forward with wit and wisdom, to purchase those materials and to then take all these other steps. That I have um outlined here in order to. That I've um outlined here in order to ensure that we have a very successful implementation. And that we do this in a very strong um and purposeful way. Balanced literacy is the. Approach that I was thinking on. I couldn't think of the word balance. And balanced literacy, by the way, not all bad. Um, I I love it. It's great. Doesn't throw phonics away. It just doesn't make it um at its center.
Thank you, Ruben. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Ruben? This program.
Just one quick question on that, please. These programs in any way need to help or are they just neutral in terms of. Acquisition or awareness of other languages.
Well, these are now, this this particular one is going to um not be a neutral curriculum when it comes to um. The content that's inside of it. There's a lot of social studies and science that is involved in this and art. So um those are going to be woven through, and there are strands that work their way through from kindergarten all the way to eighth. So there's connection, clear connection um. Subject, like, subject-wise, uh, from. The beginning of it to the point. Uh. I think that there is it that the curriculum, all these curriculums are going to be sensitive to diversity. Um, some probably focus on that a little bit more than others. Uh, I don't know about um promoting the. Sure, fair. That's that's certainly not what. Says that it won't be helpful.
I have a couple of questions, I guess. So first of all, just financially speaking, I'm. Wit and wisdom fits into the money that uh into the budget that we set aside. For to purchase the curriculum. I'm just guessing it does, right?
Well, we're going to get, I I'm in communication right now with. Whitney from Wit and Wisdom um to get another estimate. Uh, they were the estimate that we. Used our um. That that was the one that had the budget number that we used for our work that we um move forward with.
Okay. And so.
There may be other things that we need to get. Um. Some of that we can, we might be able to get through some early childhood grants, this early childhood grant we have when it comes to like hegemony and foundations. Um, because that fits the age group. So there are, we have done a little bit of a. A. An exploration to find out that we might have more. Resources in one school than the other one. And so we need to make sure that we're um. Providing both schools with all of the resources that they need. Also finding if we have a lot more in one place, that maybe we have excess. That we're able to move that over to the other place and not spend more money on things that we already have.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Um, and so the students who are in college learning to teach reading. Let's say at Franklin Pierce or at King State, um, but Franklin Pierce. Well, whatever, it doesn't matter. Are they learning more of the structured literacy or the whole word literacy, balanced literacy?
Well, I think, again, you know. I can provide you with some. Some resources. Balanced literacy is what, you know, about seventy percent of the the national population says they they utilize. And the nation, the national data is that about thirty-five percent of kids are actually proficient readers. Um. So I would say that I think. The idea. Um, is for the colleges, I think that they are are certainly focusing more on a phonics-based reading approach. What you're getting in your college preparatory, you know, your programs, preparing uh preparing you for teaching and so forth. Um, don't go far enough. To have you be, you know, the teacher you need to be in order to do what. But all of this, I mean, the school, schools have to help encourage you to support big growth of. Professionals. So as we go through, but I think that they can get a good, strong base. I'm pretty certain in my conversation with King State, that is the case. And FPU, we would certainly have going forward because of our partnership, we would have a lot of say in how things would move forward.
Um, so I recently went through the UNH system to complete my um education degree. And they are a hundred percent throwing themselves behind the science of reading um as far as curriculum and getting that. So all of it is. They they are completely, you know, putting, you know, this is what all literacy is. Yeah, kind of, uh, the UNH system anyway.
Yeah. Well, and if the UN, yeah, the state, they usually go together, the states.
Could you tell me more about three-year implementation?
Yeah, uh, we would start off with, well, first of all, we want to get the materials. We'd want to be able to. Provide those to teachers so that they have those, they can look through those. That's important. Um, while that's happening, we would want to uh. Be starting to do some site visits of places that have it have various um implementation. Um. Or various levels of implementation. So someone would maybe a one year, someone with a couple of years, someone with three years. So we may have to go inflict, for instance, a Massachusetts school to see someone who's been doing it for quite a while. Um, so giving people a picture of what could be is very important. The. My understanding is that you would start off from a curriculum standpoint, the first year, you, that there are four modules. Um, and that they recommend that you do not do all four modules in the first year, that it would be impossible to do so. It's just too much. That you would do two modules and do them one at a time. And then the following year, three modules. And then if you do three modules, my understanding is that. You at least involve all the standards that need to be taught. And then the third year, you would, you would do all the entire program during that timeframe. So that's your three years. Now, you never stop improving your implementation. But that gives you your really solid base of um everyone having gone through the entire program. You know, at least once, some things more than once, certainly. And so also while that's happening, you want to make sure that you have common planning times, so that teachers are working with this. This dovetails nicely with when we go back to that. Picture right here. Um, it dovetails nicely with the assessment tools that we put into place this year that to help. One with our um identify our learner's needs. So this is aims one. Uh, aims one plus. And then um to help to improve our PLC conversations around that. And then this is going to come around and it's linked all to that. Nothing is separate. So. Um.
So one of the things that you talked about was SAS. And um, when can we expect to see some results? If they ask from this program.
Sure, uh, I would expect to see them in within the first year. Uh, we are going to, I mean, I'll I'll come back in a couple of months and tell you how these other schools have fared. Uh, but one of the. Bits of feedback that we've received from these people who have even started implementing in one year is that. Um, their learners are certainly having more dialogue. They're having more communication. There's, they're writing all the time. Uh, there are, while these are probably outlier situations, but they're talking about first graders writing four paragraphs. They haven't had that experience before. It's not something that they're really focusing on. It's just happening because they are focusing on putting their thinking. And their comprehension into writing on a regular basis with what this is. Um, so. I also think that uh with. You know, not just the program itself, but with another year of working with our assessment tools. Um, getting rid of NWEA, which hasn't helped us in this district, using something that we can utilize on a regular basis. That also helps us progress and monitor every couple of weeks when we put in a moment that uh. Some supports in place, an intervention in place, you know, and then we have better conversations, professional development. Um, that could be internal professional development. It doesn't have to be something coming from the other side. Uh, to help us have more focused conversations within our PLCs, that's going to all be supportive of having better and. New Hampshire SAS um results. And it should spill over into other subject areas as well, such as mathematics. Because the same good practices that are being promoted within this program right here are also good practices to use in your area of mathematics. Science and so.
Sam, we're not else have any questions for Ruben?
I guess I I'm just going to keep asking the question, so.
Sure.
Um. I understand that Jeffrey gets title one funding and so. I'm always, I I have been a little bit unclear about, is there a special level of education that's required to become a. A title one reading specialist, but also in in pertaining to this. Wit and wisdom program, is there a special training that. Reading specialist, title one reading specialist can access, or is that just taking care of within the program at large?
Sure, this right here is by and large a core program.
Okay.
And so it is um. Your question's hard um to answer in one way and easier in another way. So the quick answer is. All of our teachers, we want to have letters trained. That would be also the um individuals who are title one um. Title one teachers as well, supporting students who have, you know, a few more needs, a few more interventions that they would need to have on a regular basis. So that they have a good foundation of um, which many do already. But have a good foundation of the understanding of how the brain operates, how it works, what's happening when a student um assesses in a certain way. You know, and then what type of intervention is going to be best for that child. We have to do a better job as a district, making sure that we find those research-based interventions and and train individuals in those, including title one. Teachers to be able to uh use them when appropriate um and targeting the. Um. The area of that's deficient, in a sense, um, the area we need. So uh, there's continuous training that has to happen in that area. Um, our title one teachers are certified. Elementary teachers. Um, they don't necessarily have reading specialist credentials. But we do want to increase the uh. The level of skill for all of our teachers. So there's this versatility, but also, but we're also getting it. But in the reason why we we want to use this wit and wisdom is because we want to make sure that the core. The first, the first level of teaching is as strong as it possibly can be. And then when the other, um, when students, then there will be students, there's always that that case where you, students need more support. Those individuals then have um other resources that they're trained in in order to help support. Those learners become proficient readers.
Okay.
In the goal by the end of third grade.
Thank you. That answered the other question.
Any further questions? If not, I think what we're probably looking for tonight is a a motion to. Prove the adoption of this program. Is that, is that correct, Ruben?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt with original kid eight. Reading program.
Thank you, Lisa.
A second.
Thank you, Kim. All those in favor uh of the adoption of the wit and wisdom. Reading program for K through eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? That passes by a vote of seven to zero to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ruben. Thanks, everyone, for the good discussion there. All right, moving on to the next item on our agenda. Board committee updates. Um. I don't think that we had, I think we left off.
We want to do the policies first.
Are they on there? Did I skip them over?
We have three for second reading, three for second reading, right?
Yes.
Oh, I must have an updated copy of the agenda here.
Yeah, I have the updated.
Perfect. Yes, we do. I printed out the wrong copies.
Yeah, on on the website, there's an updated.
Excellent, yeah.
So I would like to make a motion to adopt policy KHB advertising and publicity in the schools.
Second. Any discussion? All right, if not. Let's take a vote. All those in favor of adopting policy KHB advertising and publicity in schools. Um. As submitted, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? That policy is adopted by a vote of seven to zero to zero.
Would like to make a motion to revoke policy JJG as redundant.
Does that have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Kim. Any discussion? All those in favor of revoking policy JJG as redundant, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? That motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero to zero.
I would like a million, look, to make a motion to accept policy BID. Which includes a stipend increase for school board members from five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars. And includes a role of school board chair with a stipend of twelve hundred dollars per year.
Is there a second on that? I'll second that. Thank you, John. Any discussion?
I thought it was going to be a volunteer position.
Me too. It's not, uh, and and again, this is common practice. I I think that. I do appreciate the the work that went into this, looking at what other.
Well, I didn't know it's getting paid.
School boards have done, I think that certainly informed me. So I appreciate your work on that.
Don't worry, it only comes to like maybe, you know, like a dollar, you know, uh, you know, an hour.
It covers your gas.
It covers, it covers gap.
Any uh further discussion? All right, uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of approving uh the revisions to policy BID, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? That passes by a vote also of seven to zero to zero. For bringing that up, Lisa. So now we move on to board committee updates. My recollection from last meeting is that we. That there weren't going to be any meetings in between now and then until we reset the. Membership update. So I'll just, I'll pause for a second and say, does anybody have any board committee updates? Not not expecting there's going to be one. No? Excellent. That's what I'd like to do. Now I sent out a communication to hopefully make this a little bit more efficient. Uh, I'm assuming that this is what. It's projecting.
Yes.
I steal that.
You um.
Is that gonna?
While they're doing that transition, I just want to throw in about the solar um events. Um, that's my understanding that the um. Field will have an event that's being run by um some high school students, a good uh group of science high school students. Are going to be running a program um for the eclipse. And that's pretty exciting with some staff chaperones. But it's really being driven and run by the students and the science classes. So that's pretty cool.
Yeah, that's cool.
So. I sent out a poll. Over the course of the past two weeks to see what middies people would need to be on for the most part. Uh, it's worked out, but I still think we have some decisions to make. And I'd just like to confirm with everybody. Uh, what I'd like to do is just go across. And again, I've. Please don't consider whatever I placed in here to be final. This is still open for discussion, but I think it gets us, you know, most of the way there. So we're not spending the next. Half an hour trying to, trying to figure this out. So I'm going to go over one by one. Uh, requesting to be on the facilities committee was. John. Sandy and Christine. I would like to have a chair identified for each one of these for the purpose of, you know, scheduling meetings. Being the responsible person. Any comments or objections to that? The only other person that was on there was me, so. Not objecting. Um, very good. Uh, for the finance committee. Requesting to be on that was Charlie. John and Lisa. Not sure who the who the chair of that was or who who wants to be the chair, but that's. That's what I had. Any?
Charlie's chair of that one.
Charlie's chair? Yeah, I guess. All right. Sounds good. For policy committee, we had. Lisa, Charlie and Kim.
And don't worry, Charlie, Lisa's chair of that one.
All right. Well, I think that's to be decided here. So when for education, right, we had four. Four people respond if they'd like to be on the education committee, John, Christine, Charlie and Kim. I'm not sure who the. Previous chair was. Was it you?
Yeah.
It was Kim.
Is that too many people to be on that?
Yes, it is. So that's why it's highlighted in yellow.
I would. Prefer to three other members.
Okay.
And I see that you could use someone perhaps in communications.
Yes.
And I would. Do want to.
Excellent. That's just what I was looking for. Thank you, John. Yeah, definitely not a good community here. Okay, well, we'll do the powerpointing later. For wellness. Chris, I assume that you were chair of that committee or at least could be. Or Sandy.
Yes.
Maybe possibly. And myself. That sounds good. For communication committee. We have. We're adding John. Then there's a matter of who's going to be the chair of that committee. Say John's already a chair, so I'll recommend, I guess, between. Sandy and I. Sandy, would you be interested in chairing that committee? No, you don't think so?
You know. I'm just getting my feet wet.
Understood. Understood. Figured I'd ask.
It's that's the first year of information.
Yeah.
Getting your feet wet.
Yeah.
Second year, second year sharing. Third year sharing them all.
All right, I think we're. Moving along pretty good here. We do have an issue with the manifest. My understanding is that we need one person from each town to sign off on the manifest, which is generally each week. I'm willing to do that for range. Need a Jeffrey volunteer.
So I'm willing to do that, although. Sandy, I know you mentioned that you've done lots of manifesting your role as president. On the other hand. This is where we spent so much of our money. You get to see where it goes.
Yeah. Well, what is the plan? Like if is it every week and where is it? And what if I'm gone for a week? Who does it then?
So if you're gone, no problem, someone will all back up or somebody else will.
Okay.
We do it down at the entrance to the middle school, the superintendent's office right up now, right at the.
On a specific.
There and it's usually once a week.
A specific day or will somebody call me?
They'll they'll notify you by email when it's ready. Generally, I I go over there like. On on Friday.
Okay.
But if you go over there once a week. It's probably fine.
Yeah, I mean, I'm obligated to the town to be there once a week.
Your day.
And they're pretty fairly, I mean, I could. Get the notification on Friday and come in on Thursday a number of times and they're they're pretty.
I think if you can be there once a week, whatever works for you during business hours, that works.
One of the checks out.
Perfect. So at the last board meeting, we had discussed, you know, removing that goals committee. Doing it. As a board a couple of times a year in a in a in a public meeting. I know that. There may be a suggestion to have. An additional committee and I wanted to. To throw that out there. I guess there is room, right? If we're doing seven committees, everyone gets to be a chair and it kind of balances out nicely. Anyone have any ideas as far as a potential new committee to replace the goals? I know I filled in some names there, but that was just to balance it out.
I do.
Oh.
Right?
Yeah, Lisa, why don't you? Explain your potential idea here.
So. My idea is that we've talked over the last couple of years about. The legislative actions happening with the state. And. Feeling that there is our areas that we could be more active or at least more informed in. And so wondered if a committee to kind of keep track. And not particularly monthly, something that when legislation is session is in session would be monthly. And when it wasn't in session would be, you know, every other month or every three months. But just helping to keep track of major bills that are being presented, major initiatives that are being brought forward, especially in this election year. And possible transitions in the education department with that. It's it's a good idea to be just keeping informed. We are responsible in the delegate committees to be informed of any changes with the. School Board Association policies, but also with the Department of Education and this what? What's being brought forward in a state level? And so my suggestion is that we create a committee that keeps abreast of the legislation, even though all of us should be. It's something that can often go by the side. So I truly appreciate Ruben bringing up Ed three three oh six. I hope you guys are following that. There's areas of that particular bill that are. Very concerning. One in particular is that they they have removed all mentioned that custodial staff need to be careful of any. Toxins that they bring in the schools and when they use toxins in the schools, they've completely eradicated that in this review. Which you worked there before. Another one is that we don't actually have to have a principal at each school if this passes, that a school district. Has to have a licensed principal access for each school. Doesn't mean a full-time principal, doesn't mean.
Going to word license.
Or license.
Because sort of.
For a certain number of hundreds of kids, every school should have an assistant principal. And school counselor. So there's there's pieces of three oh six that really are very concerning. And and should simply be, you know. Watched, but also acted upon as far as notifying people. So having a committee saying, yeah, these are things that are pretty, that are coming up that we really want to not. Not miss would might be a handy thing.
Yeah. And as you know, I agree with you there and I think what we do now, right? And I've had some conversation, other people have mentioned this, right? Are concerned about this and rightfully so. These are very impactful. It kind of what came to mind, I think the. Our policy committee a lot of times is has to react to these changes, right? We're very, we're very reactionary like, oh, here's what happened over the past. You know, six months, let's change all our policies now. The other piece of that, now I think the policy committee probably does enough. But the other piece of that is kind of a proactive approach where. You know, I think the level of activity is to be defined, but at least to be informed and, you know, it's to me, it's another way to keep our community informed as well. I think these are. These are complicated issues. I think your average. Person doesn't have the time or. Isn't aware of these things that are going on and I do see it as. Part of our responsibility as a elected school board. To give them an opportunity to go forward, right? It's not to. Not to advocate necessarily on certainly one way or the other, but to give them the the knowledge to inform themselves. About how these things are going to impact our schools, so. Definitely in favor of creating, you know, a new committee and I just wanted to see what. There any other thoughts? On that matter.
I'll just chime in. It sounds like a good idea. That occurred to me, but certainly a lot that goes on. As you say, the issues can be complex and even if you. Even if you read the available information, you may not fully understand. How things got the way they did or why or what the reason is, but. But if you don't look into things and ask questions and you don't find out, then certainly there's a role we can play to communicate affect the community and so. Something.
I'm thinking the way we should handle this is. Make a motion to. Add this committee. And Lisa, do you want to come up with a name for it?
It's not, it's not going to be the goals committee?
No, those communities have.
Right, but I didn't know it was still kind of like a. Goals committee.
It would be a legislative. And inform legislation. I don't have a name. But I make a motion that we make it. It and the first action would be to make a name.
For now, can we type in legislation just for the the purpose? We can always change the name, I guess. All right, so Lisa's made a motion to create a new. Leg legislation committee. Is there a second?
I'll say that.
Thank you, Charlie. Any further discussion? If not. All those in favor of the motion? Indicate by saying I.
I.
Right.
All those opposed? Abstentions? All right. Seven zero zero. In order to just kind of. Balance this out, I have. I'll admit that, you know, Lisa and I talked a little bit and this just balances. It out a little bit more. These are areas that we certainly are interested in. Kim, I put you on there as well. All right.
That's great. When will it meet?
Yeah.
I'm happy to take on the role right now of organizing the meeting and then we can go from there.
Perfect.
You know, the board. We can decide.
Yeah, and I'll ask just the everyone here who's identified as a chair, you know, communicate with the other members and. I don't necessarily want to take the time right now to decide on meeting times. I'll ask each chair. To take that action within this next week to set up a a meeting and a meeting schedule.
I will say that policy committee was would be technically scheduled if it stayed the same for this Thursday, but because of the storm coming. I'm let's cancel that and we'll talk about making a new date.
And I'll choose to be next week. Thursday. The. Hello.
All right, I think that closes out the board committee updates. Onto discussion items. One of the items that I asked be put on here, we had a. Snow day on. Oops, let me hand this back over. Through the agenda, we had a snow day on March twenty fifth. There was. Kind of a. A late cancellation, a delay and then a late cancellation. You know, we all may be disgusted. It was. You know, discussed certainly in the school community. I know I had some questions received about it. I just figured this was the next opportunity to maybe discuss that openly, right? What happened? It may be. You know, what we can do, you know, going forward to. You know, just ensure that maybe. That situation doesn't happen again. I don't know. Really just wanted to reserve the time to have an open discussion so that we could talk about it. The public could. Understand. What the issue was and then going forward and maybe we can even touch on, you know, the weather later this week. I think that's a pertinent item to talk about. So Ruben, do you want to talk a little bit about what happened that day? I mean, I could, I guess, lay out the facts, but I could leave it to you.
That would be good. It'd be tough to have a discussion of like place. So the actually didn't take things in start on March. They started beforehand during the weekend. So. On March the twenty fourth, the morning or the afternoon. Started to have conversations with all of the administrators exactly what, you know, we are going to have a closure. And how would we go at the end of that? And so the reason for that conversation was obviously due to the storm that had taken place, but also because we had. Our buildings didn't have power. Buildings came back. And this building was the one that had power first. Then our mess had power and the last one to have power was Jeffrey grade school. We had all schools had outlined plans for how what they would do with teachers during that time frame. So the teachers would have that day, not even make it up at the end. We had already finalized our calendar for the learners and so we were in we were in good shape for hours. And so we felt, okay, we're not going to. Need to make up that day necessarily, but that we would want to make sure that we weren't losing a powerful day. For instance. We fast forward a little bit, we had a remote day for for teachers or they could be here as well if they wanted to. But in this school, they've worked more on there and we ask a coordination work that they had. So it was a very valuable day for a lot of educators. Now. We had that planned. We were also, I was in the conversations or or some text messaging with the. Road agent here in Jeffrey and letting me know how things were going that way. Obviously checking online to see what was happening with power outages around the area and also any type of. Snow or weather that was going to be coming our way. We determined that the best thing to do like that, well, we were going to actually cancel because Jeffrey grade school was not coming up and didn't come up in the time frame that we thought it was going to, but then it did. And so we said, all right, it is important to make sure that we have school. Maybe we're not going to have everyone there, but we have enough individuals who need to be in school. Obviously for learning, but also for. Reasons food insecurity, also for warmth, et cetera. This is a place to be. And if the roads are in good order, which is what by and large we were told was going to be the case for travel. Then we were going to be able to contact bus company. The bus company had a conversation with the bus company around that. Tracy, who was the. Was the manager of that area was out of state, but I was in constant conversation with her. Decided that it was good in talking with some of our administrators, that was a good idea to put a two-hour delay in place in order to. Give us time to make a decision, like for instance, if one of our students didn't have power again and then that cancellation. Or if if our decision was to stay the same, we would also give people time to get into the school. In the morning and be able to. Clean off their cars, do whatever, take their time to come on. We believe it was the right decision. We think it was the. The best approach. And we knew that if something was going to take place, that was, for instance, what we figured would be like a school going down with power again, we could make that call. I had contacted the bus company at six thirty, reminded them that we had a two-hour delay. They had heard back from them and they indicated I got a response. Yes, we heard. No, we've been there since five thirty. We're doing, we're getting some ice off of buses. So that was at six thirty and that was the last time I heard from the bus company. So at on Monday. My, I was going to the legislative. A legislative session over in Concord, you know, hear about something to be. Items having to do with the legislation having to do with. Our type of school or quality school district and some other things. Certainly we had three oh sixes is on everyone's mind as well. I didn't get to get in there for the first hour or so because once I drove in there, I got a call from Jen Horn. Jen Horn gave me a call. She said, hi, have you been contacted by the bus company? I said, no, no one's contacted. I don't have emails. I don't have any text messages and no one has provided a phone call to me. Said, why? What's up? And she says, I have been contacted. She was contacted by somebody, leaving that one alone. Someone who works at the bus company knew her number, so called her up and said, is there anything you can do? I asked Jen, she was on her way in. I said, please go to the. Where the buses are. It's a mile away from here and find out what exactly is taking place. The word we got was that some buses have gone, others weren't out of the lot yet. And that there were bus drivers refusing to drive due to ice on the bus. So if there was indeed, I said, find out what what's going on, find out what's happening. I don't have enough information to make a decision here. This building I knew at that point. Down to nine o'clock timeframe that this place would start to develop now. We had time for the elementary if we needed to make some changes. So there were a couple of things going on in our minds. So there were a couple of things going on in our minds, my mind in particular, when I hear that there are bus drivers saying, indicating, this is rumor and all at this point in time, um, or secondhand information at this point in time. That, um, they were refusing to drive. If that's the case, in my mind, someone's either telling them or, um, imploring them to get out there and and do this perhaps with ice on top of that vehicle, which of course would be illegal and unsafe. Um, we as a district can have no part of that and we are not going to promote that behavior whatsoever. Uh, Jen called me back. Indeed, there was a significant amount of ice on the top of several of the buses. There was an individual up there smashing ice off or trying to get it off. And this was like forty-five minutes into like there were, I, my understanding is that people are already not picked up. And it was forty-five minutes late. So I said, well, we don't, there's no way these buses are going to be going to pick up any of our other kids. We're not going to promote this choice. Cause I have, you know, I didn't, I don't know if other people have kept, some people were refusing. Other people maybe chose to drive and so that is on, I don't know. We weren't going to condone any of it. And we didn't want to have any, any, uh, part of doing an illegal activity or an unsafe activity. Our names are on those buses. So from a practical standpoint, if something happens, that is what that reputation to the schools will be a problem. More importantly, the lives of individuals who are driving around the buses and so forth could would be at danger and that's not okay. Um, and we don't want to be at all responsible or complicit with any type of behavior that is going to harm someone like that. The reason for canceling at that point in time, even though by and large, majority of the individuals were here was because, um, we were not going to take part in transporting people. And if we can't transport people, we can't provide safe, which is a, we have, you know, appropriate public education. If there are learners who have, uh, identified needs or and so forth, especially if we can't pick them up and bring them into school, then we are also a violation that way. And that's not okay. So, uh, the other reason is that we knew we had to cancel for the elementary. So we knew that parents were probably already either at work or on their way to work. And so, um, at the point of making a decision, like, you know, we're going to have to cancel. We're saying, all right, well, we can at least in many families have older kids back home so that the younger children are taken care of in the timeframe. So the parents can, who are here already at work, um, can stay there. And and we can, or are on their way and so forth. We can help these individuals going back there. We also consider, um, you know, uh, contractual equality, you know, within the schools as well. That was not one of the top priority. If we could have had school in one place and not the other ones, it felt good about that. We probably, we've done that before. Um, when a school has had, say, some, some mechanical problems within the school, we have chosen to do that. Um, but we've usually had more time to kind of plan that out. Uh, we I went and saw, you know, a couple of posts on Facebook. I knew the moment that I got the phone call, I bet there was ice on it, but this was not going to go well. Um, but we had to make the best decision for for the school district as well as for the safety of our kids and and for our faculty and staff. And so, um, and I believe we did. At no time did anyone ever contact me. There was a post on Facebook that said that someone, uh, by one of the bus company members indicating that they had tried to contact the school and tried to contact the superintendent. My cell phone number is at the bottom of every single email that goes out. Everyone in this district has my cell phone number and he texts me and I will get that information. I'm in regular contact with the bus company. This is very easy to contact me. Um, my Gmail gets notified every time I have a, a, a message coming through my, um, email. So email was not attended. Um, there was no record. I asked and made sure that there was no record of a voicemail in my office and the S A U of anywhere and not on this side. So while someone might put up there that they tried to contact us calling and ringing something once perhaps, or I don't know, calling a wrong number. I'm not sure what took place is not trying to contact someone. And it is certainly not appropriate to say that they tried in insinuating that we weren't available to get the information when they knew that they needed to. Furthermore, a company that we pay for for these services that is a mile away knows at seven thirty that they can't do this, can't drive over here and tell several people who are already here that that would have happened, that would have been okay. And they would have been able to contact me. Um, they certainly could have contacted their manager. I don't know what exactly happened behind the scenes. I don't know why I wasn't contacted. But she had, she was in contact with me earlier. So I assume that she would have been able to get that information and contact me. Um, I don't appreciate the individual going and putting my name out there, saying that she couldn't, he tried to contact me. I don't even know who you are. And so that that's fine. I don't have to. Um, but if you're going to say that try to contact me, make sure you actually did that. I talked to the bus company the next day. The bus company did indicate that no one left the message that they tried calling the schools and that was about it. Um, so I would say that the bus company did not try, that they tried that potentially there were some people who were asked to do something illegal. And I'm glad that those individuals who chose not to reportedly drive, did not drive. They did the right thing in that respect. Did not do the right thing in insinuating that the school district had any clue whatsoever about the situation that took place. But we did do the right thing. It was the right call, given the situation that we had and the timing that we got the information. Ideally, that wouldn't happen again. Um, I've, I've talked to the bus company manager and indicated that at least everyone needs to have of, you know, the, the information over there to be able to contact a lot of the us. You know, so myself, Jen, um, we can give them, you know, have the cell phone numbers. If someone's out of state or someone else is in charge, they need to have a process for making sure that they um, can carry on without that individual. So, uh, I realized there were some abnormalities of how things were being done there. Now, in years past with different ownership, and when we've had significant storms and so forth, or it was going to be very, very cold and we were concerned about the buses even running in the morning time. Uh, those buses would have been running all day in the previous day, at the very least. All that should have been dealt with on the weekend and it was not. This has been relayed to the bus company. My irritation and upsetness, I'm keeping it fairly calm. Um, I was calm until was, was provided to them. I, you know, the people who work over there are good people.
Thanks, Ruben, for the explanation. I just think it's important that, you know, these things affect a variety of, uh, community. Information's certainly out there.
Yeah, and I, I'm sorry, though I don't believe that it was necessarily, you know, I don't think it was our fault for this. I'm
Yeah, no.
But, but nonetheless, I understand how much it impacted certain people. And it's, it's tough and it shouldn't have happened.
Right. I think that was pretty thorough, but are there any, uh, any questions for Ruben on this matter? John?
Well, just like Charlie, a very tough situation and certainly on a person-to-person basis, I can see lots of reason to be unhappy and to let people know that. But obviously on a professional basis, we have to support the bus company. They have to support us and I, I hope that you know, there have been management changes. It's this twice in the past three years. And I hope that you can have a meeting of the minds with them. So there are assurances that, that you know, all covered the responsibilities adequately in the future. I mean, at some point we could put out a statement, but again, we want to be as
Yeah, I guess my intent was just to have a a public discussion about it. I think it's important that, you know, these things that do impact the community, we talk about and, you know, I think we have confidence that things will be improved going forward with that communication that's taking place. So.
So that brings us
Yeah, yeah.
To this week. And so we have, um, started the planning for later on this week. At first it looked like Wednesday was going to be something and then maybe Thursday appears Thursday is going to be perhaps the bigger of the two days. Um, we're going to go to a job fair. No, as though that's going to happen, um, but that's okay. Hopefully that will be rescheduled. The, um, so we'll see about Wednesday. Uh, what we've done is, um, we have notified the teachers, I believe, uh, notification has gone home also. Possibly two families that I can't, I can't say for certain at the elementary level. That, um, we would be going forward and planning a, um, remote learning days. One or two, um, Chromebooks would be going home with learners tomorrow. It's still obviously if we can have school Wednesday, we're going to have school Wednesday in person. That is the goal. It's not for us to say, hey, no, we're just going to do it remotely. Uh, if it becomes apparent that the weather is going to be a certain way, um, or the, the chances are very high. Then, uh, we'll make the call early if we can. But, uh, you know, we're, we're planning to have school if we possibly can. If, of course, the weather ends up becoming a situation where outages occur and, you know, and that would inhibit us from doing a lot of learning, then then it becomes by default a snow day, I guess. You can call it that.
And having, having a snow day won't require any changes to the calendar?
Doesn't require it. I think that as a school system, it's important that we promote, uh, the importance of learning, which is why we have these remote days that, um, our kids being able to learn and whether in a synchronous and asynchronous way is a, is something that's going to be valuable to them for their lives. We obviously don't want to go back to the pandemic year where it was all the time. That was not healthy. Um, not a healthy situation, but once or twice, three times during, during the schooling period, something that is, um, certainly I think has some value. Um, but it also allows us to send that message that education is important. You might be focusing narrowly on a couple of subjects on that day. There would be morning meetings. Um, when you're into school, that time, the middle, middle of high schools a little bit, um, you know, set up for it anyway with the notice and so forth. So if we are going to have a day off those remote days, we'll keep planned.
Thank you, Ruben. Any more questions or comments on the subject? No?
This will be the first remote day, right?
Yeah, we, it would be the first one if we have.
So for those kindergarteners, it'll be a big day.
Oh, well, our remote days, we agreed that pre-K and kindergarten
Okay.
does not, uh, participate in that
So first graders.
We don't put the, uh, technology in front of the fours and fives
Yeah.
for them.
For the first graders, it'll be a big day.
It would be a big day.
Yeah. Exciting.
Anything else? The, the next item on there, we discussed already school board committee reorganization. As far as school board goals, I'm going to make the suggestion that we continue to think about that. I think, given how long we've been here, I'd rather have a a healthy discussion around, around that. I think it's important enough to, to maybe save for another time. So I'll ask everyone here to continue to think about maybe some important time-bound, uh, goals for our, our school board this year, but we can address that later unless there's any objection to that. I don't see any. Given that, we'll open it up for the second session of public comments. There's nothing in the room. I'm seeing head nods. Nothing online. Board matters? Anybody have any board matters? I don't have any. Yes, John?
Just had one brief one.
Sure.
Uh, this is our decision, uh, last month or maybe it was the month before and ever. Uh, regarding uh, revision energy and the decision to tell them to go ahead and file a pre-application. They did. I've been informed that, uh, with revision, filed a pre-application for interconnection of P S N H and, uh, it will take about six weeks for that report to come back. What they're asking is whether there is enough capacity at the Jaffrey Road, old Jaffrey Road site for there to be a project going forward.
Okay.
And so we'll, we'll have some kind of a report from them in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. Any other board matters? Not the last item on our agenda is adjournment. If I could get a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Kim. A second.
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All those in favor of adjournment? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain. Seven zero zero. Thank you, everyone.